Appreciate that.
All right, it's seven oh one. I'd like to welcome everybody to the select board meeting for the town of Georgetown on Tuesday, October fifteenth. Remind, I'd like to remind everybody that the meeting's being recorded for our YouTube thing. Is there any public comment?
And I know Jess Weller from Conservation wanted to.
Okay, speak up. Jess.
Hello.
Hi Jess.
Hi. For those of you that don't know me, I am Jessica Weller and I'm the current Chair of the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission just recently renewed our town's Community Resilience Partnership with the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future. And we were approached by Jody Jones of the New Araucic Climate Committee, which is a municipal committee. And they asked if Georgetown would like to work together to write a new Community Resilience Partnership grant around water quality and freshwater resources. The grant would be submitted in the next round of CRP grants, which are due in mid- mid-December. And when towns work together on grants, we're eligible for up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of the fifty thousand for individual grants. And there is no matching requirement for the town. We are asking for permission from you, the Select Board, to pursue a collaborative grant with Araucic around water quality and freshwater resources. As with our previous grants, the Select Board would review the proposal and have to vote your permission. Sorry. If granted permission tonight, we will, the Conservation Commission will keep you apprised of all the discussions with Araucic. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Jess.
And I thank you Jess.
And I think in talking with Jess earlier on the phone today, we thought that if the board was comfortable, we could grant a blessing tonight. Or if folks wanted time to digest, but I think it's an awesome, great idea to get more money and work with Araucic. You know, we could have it slated for our next agenda as well for formal approval. So I just wanted to offer that, but I thank you Jess and the whole commission for the work you're doing.
Can we add that later or?
Do we want to add that tonight or?
I don't see.
I thought I'd bring it up again in the liaison reports. Maybe we could just deal with it there.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you Bronwyn. And, no.
Oh, sorry. That was mine.
No more public comment? No, I guess so.
All right. And there were no items to be added except for what's going to be coming up in the liaison updates. We do have a scheduled appointment in one minute for an update on the statistical revaluation and commitment process with Bill Van Tynen. But we do have a minute left, so do we want to work through the minutes at least?
I would be happy to move approval of the minutes of September, the minutes of September, September tenth, twenty-fourth, and October first as a single motion. I second that.
All right. Everybody in favor?
All right. Rita O. Perfect. And you're in your packet there for review, there was an updated building permit listing. And with that, if Bill's ready, we're actually up to his spot for the second time on the agenda and a minute ahead of time. We rarely do that here, Bill.
I think that's rarely done in public meetings at all. I've met two of your board members. Aria, I haven't met you before. I'm Bill Van Tynen. And I've worked on the tax assessing process in the town for several years.
Hi Bill, nice to meet you. I've lived here about twenty years, so I'll see you in and about town.
So, the last time a revaluation from scratch was completed in the town of Georgetown was two thousand and three. And it was a revaluation done by me and a small staff that I have. And I believe we've done one update in the intervening time from two thousand and three. And I'm not quite sure what year it was. I think it may have been two thousand twelve. But I'm not positive. So what I've provided to you are a couple, actually three sales ratio studies. And one of them is of all the sales in town for the period of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And on the old values, that results in a ratio, a sales ratio. The assessed value divided by the sales price, an average ratio of fifty-two point seven five and round numbers. And a C O D of twenty-four point nine five. C O D is a coefficient of dispersion. The lower the number, the closer all the sales ratios are to the average ratio. When I make a tentative update, the ratio becomes ninety-three point five nine percent. And the coefficient of dispersion, twenty-three point five nine, just very a little tiny better than on the original valuations. When I do it on shoreland sales, the ratio based on the old values is forty-eight point seven six percent. And the coefficient of dispersion of twenty-one point five nine percent with the updated values. The ratio is ninety-two point four three percent and the coefficient of dispersion is twenty-two point five three. Which is a little bit of a deterioration of the coefficient of dispersion, but not by very much. And when I look at rural sales, the ratio is fifty-five point seven one percent, the coefficient of dispersion, twenty-three point eight. When I update with some changes that I made, the ratio becomes ninety-four point one one percent and the coefficient of dispersion, twenty-two point three one. A minor improvement. The state law has a few assessment standards. One of them is that a town maintain a minimum ratio of seventy percent. So you're a bit behind in that now. And the other standard is a coefficient of dispersion of twenty or lower. And I, I haven't quite reached that with the work I've done to date. The work I've done today involved increasing the land schedules. Overall, land schedules were increased, I believe, by one point by a factor of one point eight. Shorefront was done a little bit more and you can see that the shorefront ratio was a little bit lower on the old values than where all sales or rural sales. So I tried to make them a much closer ratio to each other, the shoreland and the rural sales ratios. And it involved increasing the building cost schedules approximately almost double, just a little less than doubling them. And it also involved updating depreciation based on the year two thousand twenty-four, so that newer houses that were not depreciated to a floor would receive a little bit more depreciation in their valuation calculation. My puppy has now joined the conversation, but I think he's, she's on the way out. So in a nutshell, that's a brief summary of what I have proposed. One of the difficulties working in Georgetown right now with the computer program version that you have is that it's a little awkward sometimes trading computer times so I can make some adjustments. You have three computers in the office and you have three staff in the office. So I, I can work remotely on some things. But it has to involve someone not working on the computer to allow me to do that. So I haven't probably fine tuned this quite as much as I can, but I've done it as the time has become available to use the computer. And I, I would like to go a little farther and just double check things, double check sales data to make sure it is reasonably accurate. My intention is that this is not a revaluation where everything is analyzed over a period of a year or more of time. It's, it's an interim step to put you in compliance with some standards and that are established in Maine law. And if, if you're willing to do this, I'll, I'll bring it to a conclusion. And I mean, I expect your tax rate will go way down. Because right now you're assessing at a ratio of just a little bit over fifty percent. And we would be changing it to your being at an assessment ratio of ninety, just under ninety-four percent.
And, and it's worth noting in there, Bill, that so effectively, just to put it into plain English, because some of it gets a little bit wonky. Our certified ratio, which is two years behind this data from the state of Maine, has been on a downward slide because the market is vastly outpacing what we had on the books. And by going in the direction of a ratio closer to the low nineties, the town is given the ability to bump up and certify at a full hundred percent, meaning that residents would still get their homestead exemption at the full rate, would get the veterans exemption and so on. Within that, still falling into that low nineties bumps up to a hundred. So it's not like we're certifying up at a hundred and ten percent, which the state does allow in some circumstances and so on. This is a lower end to bring us back in line with where we've kind of fallen out the last few years. Is that a fair way to say that?
It is. The state does an analysis of sales in your town every year. The sales data is usually a couple of years old. To do a state valuation, an equalized valuation of all the towns in the state, because they can't accept every valuation at face value. They have to adjust it up or down based on what sales in a town indicate. For example, right now, it wouldn't be prudent for the state to accept Georgetown's valuation when statistically it only represents fifty to fifty-five percent of the value compared to sales prices. So they do that every year. And a town is expected to adjust the, the rate, adjust certain things by the ratio. And that includes homestead exemptions, which are twenty-five thousand dollars at a hundred percent of value. But in your case should be adjusted down to twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. Veterans exemptions, which should be adjusted by the ratio. And tree growth values, which are not very, there's not a lot of tree growth land in the town of, of Georgetown. So that's not real significant, but it, it is something. And there's a little bit of home of reimbursement for land that you have in tree growth from the state. And if you have a ratio of less than seventy percent, that reimbursement, which I think is only eight hundred dollars or something, according to Mary's recollection, would be withheld from the state. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
So one question I have, thank you, Bill, is whether or not Fridays would be available for Bill to come use to jump onto a PC since y'all are not there, Tyler.
That, that has been available. That's when I've been able to mostly work on the, on the computer. And it involves leaving the server on, which I think is the computer Alex works on and Mary's computer. And then I access your, your data. I don't have every Friday available, but that's been the most conducive day.
And we, and we have already, just for what it's worth, we are working to see if we can get our IT folks to utilize the computer that's here in this conference room that runs just our meetings to be able to have that web access as well. That's just something that those ships have not crossed in the dark yet, but it's something we're working on. And Bill's team with Bill and Pat in particular have done a phenomenal job working with us over the last few months with data entry and all of it. You know, accommodating, but definitely another computer active and running would make things a lot simpler.
Right, but Tyler, we just bought that micro, micro PC, right, that runs, that runs the meeting space, right? So that could easily, you're right, it could easily be shared between two users. That's a, that's a remote setup, the IT team. So we can talk offline about that. It's something I do at my office where I have people working at different times, sharing a PC. I'd like to see, Bill, you bring this to a conclusion. So I guess that's where, what my comments derive from.
Oh, then, I mean, I'm willing to finish the job. But I want to make sure that you feel comfortable as a board with it. I don't want to do something that you don't want to have done. If you want to have it done, I'm ready, willing and able to bring it to a conclusion as quickly as I can.
Well, I'm, I mean, we, we put it off from last year, just to make sure we could get people, you know, to know what was going to go on. So I definitely, at least for me, I'm, I'm looking forward to having this, so or at least a little bit closer to being compliant with everything that we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I don't think that we have a choice, really. So there's your answer, Bill. Please, please proceed. With the eye to, the eye of, you know, concluding it and, you know, within industry standards limits.
Okay. Thank you very much. So just to, just to make sure everybody understands, we've tried to bring it in. The late, the state allows a little bit of leeway. They allow you to round your ratio by ten percent. So we've tried to bring the ratio in, in the low ninety percentage area so that it can be rounded up to a hundred percent. We're taking a somewhat conservative approach. Alrighty?
Yeah, that was good. And the last thing that I'd add to the discussion, just to make sure it's clear all the way through. The mill rate definitely will be going down this year. But the overall tax impact, because of the county budget, the town budget and the school budget all went up, we'll still see some increases even with a mill rate drop because the overall amount had to be raised. I just want to make sure that's clear to folks as well, because mill rate dropping is a good thing, but there still will be some net increases to folks as this gets over the finish line.
Especially those that, that had a state senior stabilization as well.
Right.
Oh, I forgot about that. Yeah, that's gonna.
And I think that, that in the end, I mean, I've, I've run a, I've reviewed Bill's reports. I've looked at, at where ideally this will get us in the end and it is certainly, you know, much closer to, I think the state's got us valued at almost a billion dollars next year. And we're not, we're not there yet, even with this. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
Alrighty. Any more questions? I'm gonna sign off then, all right?
Thank you. Thanks for being.
Thank you, Bill.
Alrighty, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, we're now back to our regular in the agenda. We just finished up with assessing items. Under correspondence, I only had a few items on the packet this week. And state of Maine sent along a reminder that our municipal valuation return is due either at the end of November or thirty days from commitment, whichever, you know, comes later. So at the speed we're tracking, we're going to be getting the municipal valuation return in after commitment. That's just the process on how it needs to be done. Sagatahawk County EMA is yet again, another notice for a NIMS class. This one's going to be in person in Lewiston on December second. And it is a, a most of the day class, morning into afternoon, but I believe they are paying for lunch. Town of Brunswick Public Works is also holding the Household Hazardous Waste Day. I included the notice that is going to be on October twenty-sixth, and it's very important that you pre-register. I know spots were fiddling up very fast, but if there were cancellations, something could pop on there. The link is on our homepage. And lastly, I wanted to include the Age Friendly Georgetown Community Calendar for the month of October. And I just want to say Age Friendly Georgetown is doing a great job in letting folks know of all the different community events that don't always make it onto the tail end of our agenda, because those are just meetings and aren't always as fun. There was no other correspondence. And under continuing items, I would just note that Paul Wren's Maine Waste Distardge License Renewal was approved on Town Landing Road. And under committee updates, we've been in receipt of the Recreation Committee and Conservation Committee meeting minutes. And I would turn this now over to the board for their liaison updates.
Okay. In mine, I had the planning board beginning of the month there. And they have started looking into, or they're, they're looking at trying to figure out short-term rental stuff. And before they expended a lot of energy in that, they wanted to make sure that that, or, or get some sort of a guidance from the Select Board, that they aren't just going off on their own little tangent. And then we just wanted to get some input from, from both of you guys to see if you have any, any, anything to add to what they're, what they should be doing or how they should be going about it. Ari and Bronwyn.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got the, I, I understand what you're asking. I don't have a, I don't have a great answer. It seems to be a conundrum that many, many communities are facing. And we've previously talked about the tension between absentee landlords who just buy property in order to rent it as a business on a short-term basis versus long-time seasonal or permanent residents who own a property and rent it for certain months of the year in order to be able to keep it, to be able to pay the taxes and to use it themselves. And I don't know the extent of the commercial aspect of this. I mean, I think we all have a sort of an anecdotal idea based on listings on the internet that there are a lot of Airbnb places that were not previously available, that are properties that we may not recognize. So I'm not sure what, I think we need more information and whether that is.
That's kind of what they're doing right now. They're just, you know, that's, that's what they are. They're still trying to figure out the questions and, and get more of the information also. So that's I just wanted to make sure that they aren't, that, that it's, that's okay to go forward with what they're doing, I guess, as much as anything.
I think it's, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ari. So, yeah, so sorry, Bronwyn. So I was at the last Gahi meeting and that included some planning board members. So it's good to have cross-membership between the Planning Board and those attending or participating in the Georgetown Attainable Housing Initiative. I, I think it's, as I've said before, I want to make sure that we have enough stakeholders in this drafting process, because there are lots of interests to balance. There's renters who, you know, who live here. There are, and so they're renting from some of these owners. And then, of course, we've got the LLCs who are just investment property owners who are not here as residents. And then we've got the folks whom Bronwyn was referring to. So there's a lot that I think we as a Select Board need to keep in mind. And our Planning Board, as long as they're hearing us say that, I think they're, they're understanding where we want them to focus their work, which is to make sure to use the data from MCAG, which is, you know, we gave up hours for, and it's good data. It revealed more than actually I thought it would for the amount of hours. So I really appreciate the efficiency there. And then just to keep the various interests in mind when the Planning Board is meeting and coming back to us with recommendations. I don't think this is going to be a quick process and I think we need to be very intentional and thoughtful about it, knowing that we want to support small businesses. We, we also don't want to be turned into a kind of development that we never envisioned. So I think the first thing is to be gathering information and considering what issues that information presents in terms of running the town, in terms of taxation, in terms of community, in terms of trash collection, all of those issues. I don't think we're ready to propose a particular type of legislation. You know, we're not saying, okay, Planning Board, write an ordinance that requires everybody to register, requires everybody to file reports, requires inspections. We're not saying that. But what we are saying is, tell us what the, what the conditions are and what issues we should be concerned about. And then we'll decide whether we can address those through ordinances or permitting. And, and other towns have, it makes sense to me and other towns have done this, you know, Rousek's got one. So I'd be curious about, and MCAG can get that for us. Or, you know, we can, any one of us can Google it, including the Planning Board. So just, I'd like us to be kept in the loop, particularly if we are, when there's this cross-membership between Gahi Planning Board, Select Board, and people who just go to meetings because they want to stay on top of what's out there. I think all of that's important to, to have.
Okay. Nope, that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure I had, um, let you guys know what was going on there. So, cool.
Thanks, John.
Thanks. I don't think I have anything else beyond that.
All right. Bronwyn or Aria? I believe that Bronwyn's bringing something forward from Conservation Commission.
Yeah, two things. Conservation Commission has a program running on November thirteenth on Zoom, a presentation by, and I think it's a, there'll be a Q and A as well, by an expert from NOAA on storm preparedness. Seems really timely. This is, this is her field. And it's through Nancy Kenner that we've been able to secure her participation. I would expect you to see more information about the program. But obviously, it will be recorded. It will be available, made available afterwards. And it will be focused on the kinds of storms that we're likely to experience here in the Northeast. And then the other thing is what Jessica brought forward. If we are in agreement that it would be great for, to collaborate with or explore the possibility of collaborating with a Rousek on a water study of some sort. I think the first step that they envision is to figure out whether they're interested in the same in answering the same questions that we're interested in answering. And the questions that the Conservation Commission is looking at are certainly include the ones that the Housing Committee brought forward at the previous time when they spoke to the Select Board. It was in one of those minutes that we approved. So if we're all on board with that, we're not approving a grant or a specific project, but they don't want to get too far down the road and find out that we would, we're not prepared to get entangled with another town.
Well, I don't have any issues with them looking into this at all myself.
Nor do I.
And it also brings more resources to Georgetown and a Rousek without a match. So I mean, it makes a lot of sense to me.
Does this need a motion?
If, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask too, John. If we end up hiring a hydrology firm, engineering firm, for instance, well, there'll be cost savings to be hiring the same people and perhaps an incentive to want the project. Because as we discovered with the energy audits, it's not always so easy to get the engineers out there to come pay attention to little old us. So.
Well, I move to approve a collaboration between Georgetown and a Rousek for the next resiliency grant.
It's like, that's, yeah, explore.
The word to authorize?
Authorize. I move to authorize the exploration of a partnership or collaboration between Georgetown and a Rousek.
Second.
All ready in favor?
Yeah.
Perfect, three to zero. And Jess Weller had just noted, thank you, everyone. So, thank you. Was there more that you wanted to report on, Bronwyn?
Um, I'll have more from the Solid Waste Committee at our next meeting, whenever that is. But they are having issues with enough personnel. And we're looking into ways to deal, to try and have a group of substitutes available when they need them.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Alright, so from the Rec Committee, we've got Halloween coming up and we are, my understanding is Rec and the GCC are joining forces on Halloween for a, a party at the, at the community center with pizza and kids and trick-or-treating. So if anybody out in the Zoom land wants to show up and have candy in their car and decorate their car or just be ghoulish, however you feel free to do that, please do so on Halloween. Thank you. Big shout out to the Fire Department and all its volunteers for keeping us safe on Saturday with the downed trees and for spending your entire Saturday monitoring those issues. We, we do appreciate that. Especially with all the downed power lines and the disruption and probably some grumpy people stuck on either side of the island. And then the Board of Appeals, we, there's been no meeting of the Board of Appeals, but I've had at least one request for those, for those folks to meet. So I'll be scheduling a meeting so that they can elect their officers and get on with their, you know, their committee. And that's it for me. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. There's a school board meeting, I think, this Wednesday.
Yes. Perfect. Any questions for any of the liaison updates?
Not for me.
If not, I will jump into a very brief town administrator update. I just wanted to let folks know that voting is underway here at town office, and I just want to let folks know that you can vote absentee in person. You can also request an absentee ballot online by mail when you're registering your car or by phone, or you can vote on election day. So there are many ways to participate and Georgetown's got a lot of folks that are making their voices heard. I also want to note that the Robin Hood Road Culver Project is now approaching its finality. I believe today there was some.
The, that, that is done, and I must have not explained it, that had been planning on getting the first part of the road paved or some portion of the first part. And that's, Booker said they had an opening, so I don't know whether they actually did anything today, but they're hoping to get it this week while the weather's good. So.
Perfect.
Robin Hood, yes.
And Aria had mentioned the storm response this weekend, and I would just echo all those great things that she had mentioned. I also want to note that there is a group convening, a coastal convening group for storm preparedness that right now they're in the early stages of a Rousek, Pittsburgh, Georgetown, and some stakeholder groups. I've been asked to attend and I'm gonna make every effort to be at that meeting when it comes. Right now, it's either gonna be mid-November or early December, and I will keep the board abreast of what's coming. I also want to note that at the wharf, the recreational floats are now out. And I was asked by Stephen today at the TOPMB to mention that if there were boats at Todd's Landing, to start picking up your canoes. And lastly, I would note that we've got in our quarterly reports for the Climate Resiliency Project that we just finished with the energy audit. So that is rapidly close to done. We got the Robin Hood Road Culver Quarterly Project in. It was finished eight days after the end of the quarter. So we'll have one more report with them and some reimbursements to get in. And lastly, I would just note that in the future, if we have a Conservation Commission meeting on a Monday, I will make sure to get the link out either on Thursday or the morning of. I don't even know where I was on the holiday yesterday, but clearly not thinking of Conservation Commission. So my apologies. And with that, I think I touched base on all the things on my list. Any questions? Thank you, thank you. And Mary, you are up for a Finance Director's update.
Alright. Okay, so as I mentioned at our last meeting, the town is in need of a tax anticipation note. I do believe I got authorization last time to shop for one, correct?
I believe so.
So, so now I'm to the, to the point of, I've reached out to legal counsel for the legal opinion. Last year, I noted for the first time that, that all three Select Board members were on the tax anticipation note, which honestly is not a problem, other than the fact that it means everybody needs to get in here and sign it. So my request to the board would be actually three things. To authorize the, the tax anticipation note at six hundred, and not to exceed six hundred thousand, which is what we talked about last time. We're going with Bath Savings on that, and I would request that the Select Board allow the chair to sign it so you all don't have to come in for that meeting or, or for that, you know, on, on October thirty first. So, and I think that's it for the tan.
So, so how about if I, how about if I move that we approve your request? We authorize you to proceed with Bath Savings on a tax anticipation note not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars to be signed by Jonathan as the Chair of the Board.
And the Finance Director. Yes. Okay, perfect.
And I second that motion.
Alright, everybody in favor?
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you. Also in your packet today or for things for signature, the engagement letter for our next, for our fiscal audit that just ended in June has, has arrived from RHR Smith. So I, I normally sign off on that, that letter, and there's a spot for me, but there's also a new spot that says governance by. So I thought at that point that I should also have the Chair of the Select Board sign that engagement letter as well. We have two things with, actually three things. The RHR Smith does the school audit for them. It does the town audit, and it also does, as part of Purdy Powers Audit, they always took care of our capital assets. But with RHR Smith, that's a separate thing, so we also have them handle that. So it's just a couple of different documents that we have signed. So I'd like to, like to have the authority, or like to have you guys authorize John signing that engagement letter as well as the Chair of the Select Board.
So moved.
I second that.
Sorry, John. You get it all.
You're getting engaged, John.
And then, as you know, we've been working with Bill Van Tynen on assessing, so we're kind of, we were kind of holding off to, to do a major review of that work until Pat was done with it. And then Tyler and I really need to rip into the, to the new stuff that was added this year and any changes so that we can make sure that that stuff's all in order before we actually commit. And then a couple of us took a class last week about payroll law and the paid family medical leave bill, which, which is, is coming up regardless of whether, you know, how we feel about that law. It does take effect January one, in which time a half of a percentage of the employees' wages are to be deducted to them and remitted to the State of Maine on a quarterly basis. So I had sent a note out to MMA asking if they had a letter to the employees to let them know, one, that that was happening, only because I want to make sure all the statute language and all that stuff is right. So MMA said that they would work on that. But I think it's important that we, as, as the town, get letters out to the folks to let them know that this is happening. And then another, another thing that I've been pondering that I kind of like to put out there so you guys can think about it is mandatory direct deposit for employee payroll checks. A lot of people do take, take direct deposit now, but those that don't, sometimes those checks will sit out there and linger. And if you noticed on the last warrant that I did on, on the, on October, on October third, I issued, I reissued like fifteen checks. There were old checks to, mostly to employees that had just failed to cash them over the years. So I was just, I think that a direct deposit, automatic direct deposit, at least for the payroll checks, would certainly help that. It wasn't vendors I was reissuing checks to, put it that way. It was all the, you know, the payroll people. So just kind of keep that in mind.
I'm comfortable with that. And I, I think that we should move in that direction. It's too difficult to reconcile months later.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, agreed. So just kind of keep that out there. And I was thinking, again, we'd make a, you know, January one date for that, and then every, you know, make sure everybody had the paperwork in on time and all that. And the main tax portal has been opened for us to be getting our municipal valuation stuff done. We usually do that and then mail it in, but they're gonna require us to start doing all that stuff online. So we've got some webinars coming up on that. And then I just want to let you know that on September twentieth, we had twenty-eight accounts go to lean, which is the normal process. Twenty-eight is actually about average. And a couple of them are pretty big hitters, so I may be making a couple of phone calls on a couple of them. One that's in lean now and is also already in lean, which I just thought would have been paid, and then another big guy down on First Beach. So a couple of ones I'm a little bit worried about. One of them to the two hundred twenty thousand, which has just never happened before. So, so pretty much that's my update, I think. And thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Any questions for Mary? If not, we will jump to Mike Field, Code Enforcement Officer, for a Code Enforcement Officer update. And I would just note during Mary's update, we tackled the only item of old business. So just what that's worth.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. So first, tree cutting, vegetation cleanup on town-owned property. So I was, met with Mr. Jasper McCarty at Two Blueberry Hill Road. I was hoping he could attend tonight, but I got my dates mixed up, so I apologize. But he's requesting the removal of at least one tree that's possible hazard to his home. And then he, you know, asked about another tree next to it, and then about some of the vegetation that's across the street from his home about if there's a way we clean that, if he could clean it up, you know, trim it down a little bit. And where it was on town-owned property. And I checked around a little bit. It was the idea to come for the SUC Board to discuss that and see if you folks were either good or not good with that. I did send some pictures earlier, and I don't know if you all had a chance to look at them or not. I'm happy to share the screen if that's helpful or if you want to look what I'm talking about or give a little bit more of an eye on it, whatever, whatever, your pleasure.
Mike, if you could share your screen, that'd be great.
Alright.
I looked at the pictures, Mike, and I just assumed this had to do with clearing an area for septic leach field. If in fact, it turns out that the Peters request to have an easement over there is going through. Is this related in any way to that?
It is not. That's a great question, Bronwyn. It is not related to it, but you know, my thought, well, my thought is if we get to a point, something to think about after I go through this is if that septic system, if we ever get to that point, and it's just to get easement, et cetera, maybe we wait to see what that's, what's gonna happen to that. And I'll show you on here as best I can where that septic, it is marked out where it is, and maybe we wait till that process either happens or doesn't happen and see what we have left. I can't tell you. It's not where the trees are. It's actually behind the trees.
And where is the house that he feels is threatened by a tree? Is that the one we see?
Yes, the kitchen's house is two.
New one?
Two McCarty, Two Blueberry Hill, correct. And this was his main one. If not so much his house, as well as the power lines run up that side too. It's lean a little bit. I'm not gonna pretend that, as a layman, looking at this. And this is the other tree he's talking about. The only other comment I would make, I'm sorry, I keep moving it on you, but the other comment I would make is that they're very large and all pine trees, and they're on a hill, kind of, Blueberry Hill, and kind of exposed by themselves.
The one closer to the house looks, is always, is pretty gnarly. I'm, I'm familiar with that tree, and it looks like the top of that other one is dead. Is that the very top of that one you're pointing on right now? Is that dead up there?
It looks like it has some dead, dead branches up there, John. Yeah. And I should have done Google before, and I spare me a minute here. This is not a very good picture of it, but this is sort of the brush, if you will, vegetation we like to trim down a little bit. You know, if, if you were okay with it, you know, I would tell them, you know, get a, I know this isn't shoreline, but I'd still want to keep the roots, if you will, in this particular area. And, and there was a question if, if it was for sight view. I don't think so, maybe a little bit, because if you look looking towards, you know, the Wharf, Five Islands, excuse me, all this is grown up. You don't see a lot beyond this as well.
I don't know. We don't take out every pine tree that grows tall. Generally, if it's threatening wires, the CMP people have thoughts about trimming. I also would ask, I mean, this is like a little bit of no man's land. And it's not maintained by anybody. It's not, I don't know how the town comes to own it. And I did ask Mary about that earlier today because I think it makes a difference in what we decide should happen to it. But it's specifically not under the jurisdiction. But it's specifically not under the jurisdiction of the TOP MB, which if it were, would be the entity worrying about trees or not. And if we start cutting stuff down over there, then who's responsible for maintaining uh the the growth, the the bushes, the lawn, or whatever it is? Um, and just how far are we? How far does this extend down the hill? Once you get started, clearing out brush, for instance.
And to your point, Bronwyn, uh, I mean, we, there's a lot of town roads with a lot of trees on them. So I don't know that that you know, the governing part of this town has the ability to decide which of these roads and their tree growth gets addressed um for uh trimming and which don't. I I think that's, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the cost of this and the slippery slope.
Yeah, I'm concerned about precedent, and if in fact it is uh would have any impact or be impacted by um preparation of that area or an area behind it for a septic system that we were going to provide an easement to, who would be paying? Uh, the the homeowner would be paying for the installation of the septic field. And I would assume the preparation, any the cutting of brush, et cetera, that was was required as part of the activity. Um, I would just like to know more about what this piece of land comprises and how we come to own it, and if we have any plans for it, aside from an easement, or cutting down undergrowth, undergrowth. But.
So that's, we can definitely track down some of that information, Bronwyn, and bring it back for a future meeting. Because I think you're right. There are very key pertinent pieces here. For instance, is this part of Ipkar? Is this part of the land that came when Maude Stussy gave a good chunk of Five Islands? And I believe a part of that lot definitely was Stussy land. I can't promise all the way up to that tree it was, though. So definitely some room for research.
Agreed. I like the precedent comments too. I mean, once you let somebody do this, then the next person will do that. Then it turns into a little bit of a mess. And and as you mentioned as well, Bronwyn, it's, I don't know what will happen in here. Um, after if we get to the point where the septic system gets, because you know, trucks are gonna have to get, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, you're you're sure you're you know more than I, but trucks are gonna have to get in here and drop, you know, up in their sand and dirt and fill and, but might be, it might be care of itself just because of that plan, but uh um, yeah, we can look further into it.
And if the trees pose a danger to the wires, CMP usually uh comes through and trims or, you know, so it it might be possible. They might top them out or something if if the situation were pointed out to them. Um.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mike.
I got my, yeah, thank you. I do have a couple of quick, couple of quick items, if you don't mind. Um, speaking of Blueberry Hill and septic system, the only thing we're still waiting for is the easement uh to cross under the private road. Um, and and Ms. Peterson's attorney has that, has had it for a little while. I've had a couple conversations with them. And uh we're just waiting for that. Once I have that, I'll, you know, I'll come back to you folks for um for your review. Uh, I closed a case on a lot boundary dispute uh in town or a week or so ago. Uh, it was uh a lot boundary dispute between two landowners, but there was issue. They wanted me to check on setbacks, et cetera. I did do that. And the setbacks are in order after I reviewed a survey. Uh, but the lot and the driveway issues are uh civil matters that will be handled between the two uh landowners. And the last thing, I didn't have it on my note that I sent to you folks, but if it's okay, uh John, I'd like to ask uh approval for a new private road name.
Okay.
Uh, the Craig Family uh at seven twenty-six Five Islands Road has added an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. Um, so what happens is that triggers that just two dwellings on one road, one long driveway. So it requires a private road name and 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 house numbers, of course. The name they're requesting is Folly Ridge Way. There are no other similar road names in Georgetown other than Ridge Road. Um, but I think Folly Ridge Way uh is enough difference uh that it wouldn't uh be any uh issue with emergency services or that type of thing.
Is that Folly, F L L E Y?
Why? F O L L Y. And then.
Yeah, because the Triggs, yeah, the Triggs are already at Folly Ridge, and so then now they want Folly Ridge Way. Okay, for their ADU. Yeah, I moved to, I moved to approve the uh designation of that part of Five Islands Road is Folly Ridge Way.
It's actually, I mean, it's not, it's not part of one twenty-seven, is it? It goes off of, it goes up the hill.
That's correct.
A driveway up the hill. So why isn't it just number one and number two on the same piece of road? Why is it two different roads?
It isn't. It'll be Folly Ridge Way if you approve. Yeah, and then and then they'll have two numbers.
I see.
Yeah, two or four. Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So is that a second, Bronwyn?
Yep. You may call it a second.
Okay, everybody in favor?
And a third. Here we go.
All right, three to O. Anything else, Mike?
That's all I have. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And we will circle back on the trees. So we are now into, we tackled the one item of old business during Mary's Finance Director update. And so now, under new business, we have the approval of the cemetery lot deed for Stephen and Patricia Thibodeau at Lot one thirty-four A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
All right, three to zero. Thank you. And we do have that deed to be signed. I also wanted to, we at previously have circled back a little bit about a discussion on select board meeting times. Is the board fine that seven PM is still good now that we are approaching daylight savings time? Is a different time better? I just know we planned to revisit it, so I wanted to give us a chance to do it when the agenda was lighter.
I'm I'm for the moving a little early to six o'clock. Just makes my after getting dinner and stuff after the meeting a heck of a lot easier as it gets this time of the year.
You know, I think we talked about this, that we would look at, look to moving it up once daylight savings changed, so I'm fine with that. Um, and I don't, so that will be uh the first Saturday in November.
Right.
You mean the first select board meeting in November would be at the new time?
Right, but daylight savings changes, you know, early November, maybe the second or third?
No, it's the first.
Okay, thank you.
Two AM Sunday morning.
Okay.
Um, in deference to the travel that Tyler has to do and your, the feelings of other people, I'll, I will, I will be on my Zoom at six.
Cool. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Thank you, everyone. Do we want to make that a motion to vote, or are we good with just stating it that way?
If we need to, does there need to be a motion? I mean, it's.
I don't think there needs to be a motion. I think we're just, we're trying to follow the lunar schedule, so to speak, the lunar calendar.
Yes, so to speak.
And that'll kick off at the first meeting in November, so our second meeting in October will still be seven PM.
Yeah.
And that gets us to the next.
Which gives you time to me, to let everybody in town know all those people who are used to seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Can now eat dinner with us.
Absolutely. And um the next item of new business was a possible reschedule for next week's select board meeting. We have been getting together once a week for the past month, and I enjoy that greatly, how I, how I.
Oh, yeah.
October is a month of five weeks, and if we switch the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth, we'd be back in an every other week kind of pattern, and that gives Bill Van Tynen a little bit of time on moving forward with commitment. The only piece that I would say that might need us to come back in is a special meeting for contracts, should we be at a point where we're able to do so. But as of tonight, I don't have an update on that.
I'd I'd be fine with uh postponing the October twenty-second meeting to October twenty-ninth and then picking up again with the second and fourth Tuesdays.
So I'm gonna second Bronwyn's motion to move it from the twenty-second to the twenty-ninth.
Everybody in favor?
All right, thank you. And for items for signature, we had if approved the cemetery lot deed and the audit engagement letter that John has been designated as the signer. And before we move into public comment and I turn this back over to John, I would just note that as of now, the executive session that we had tentatively scheduled is not necessary this evening unless the board would like to go in, but there isn't an update.
No, and I would, I was gonna say that if it turns out that we need a meeting for the contract before the twenty-ninth, perhaps it could just be an executive session. Focus on that issue and keep it much shorter.
Right.
Okay. Is that it?
And so with that, I turn this back over to you for public comment.
Is there any public comment? I don't see any.
All right.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will unmute to make such a motion.
And I'll second.
Thanks. All right.
Night, everybody.
All in favor.
Perfect.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
See you in the morning, Bronwyn.
Yes.
You bet.